You know, literal interpretation.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
Ask everyone if we can be just a little flexible tonight in terms of our agenda. We're going to work through the technology issues. I will start with the roll call, and I have seen or heard all of the members tonight along with Dr. Jones. And Mrs. Hockaday is on and she's recording our minutes. Is that correct? Dr. Jones?
Yes, actually, she is taking minutes and Maury is recording. Maury, did you start the recording?
I did.
Okay, so the meeting is being recorded now.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so this is our first all electronic meeting, so we will do our best to walk through this. I would ask if any of the members have difficulties or challenges, we're just going to pause wherever we are during the meeting and try to work through this because what I would like to do is make sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate, hear the presentations, share the information, and we all want to do our best to, in this very difficult circumstance, try to continue to function effectively as a school board, managing the operations of the schools. So what I asked Dr. Jones earlier today, before we get started, I'm going to ask him just to make a few announcements, talk about the the manner which the technology is going to work, what we're going to see and experience tonight, and then we'll get started with the formal meeting. So Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Welcome to everybody. We are working off of our Board Doc's agenda, which everybody can access on the website, or I'm sharing my screen, which has the agenda up on it. We will be following all meeting rules that were required to follow. Public is welcome to join us. We ask anybody from the public, if you are joining us, to make sure that you please turn off your video and your audio, if you could, just to make sure that the board members can hear each other. We will be doing public comment periods twice during this meeting. We have offered the opportunity for people to give us public comments for via phone call and email ahead of time. And when we get to the public comment section, we'll see if any of those have been doing, or if we have received any, excuse me. There's also a chat feature on this platform on Zoom that we're using that any member of the public at any time during the meeting, if you have comments and you want to enter them in the chat feature, feel free to do so, and then we will read those, any comments that we get from the chat feature, we will read those during the two public comment periods. So you don't have to wait till the public comment period to enter in any comments that you may have, but we will make sure that we read those to the board and that they're entered into the minutes so that everybody is able to hear the comments that the public is making during this meeting. We'll be going through the meeting. We have a couple of presentations tonight on our budget as well as distance learning, so I'll bring up those presentations on my screen when those are appropriate time. Board members, right now, you're welcome to join in the conversation. If we start getting a bunch of feedback and things, sometimes when you get too many people with their mics turned on, there's some extraneous noises. We may mute everybody. If we do that, you can raise your hands through the managed participants so that we can see that you raised your hand, or you can just raise your hand like this, and we'll make sure that we get to you and make sure that we we hear you. So I think that's everything, and I'm looking forward to our first journey through the virtual meeting landscape.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. So, and I'll just add for everyone that we've spoken a couple of times. Dr. Jones has confirmed that the manner in which we're conducting this meeting is consistent with the resolution passed by the Palatine County Board of Supervisors, and it is also consistent with the advice of our attorney. Therefore, we are doing our best to try to continue to function effectively as a governing board for the operations of the schools. And I just wanted the public to be aware of those efforts that have been taken. And again, this is this is continuity of government. So we're going to continue to function even though we're dealing with a very, very difficult situation. So at this point, what we're going to do is try to move to the more formal agenda, and I will start with the roll call. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I have I have heard or have seen all of the members of the school board this evening. They are participating electronically. We are joined by Dr. Jones, and as I look at the list of attendees, several of the several members of staff and others. So we welcome everyone to this virtual meeting of the Palatine County School Board on April 14, 2020. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and End of Vocation. Ms. Ayers has a flag prominently displayed behind her, so we'll ask if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Cole, if you would lead us in an invocation, sir.
Well.
I pledge allegiance
to the United States.
To the states of America.
The republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
For liberty.
Bein' justice for all.
For all.
I'm going to ask that you be seated for the prayer, please, so we can see each other. Heavenly Father, we are indeed in challenging times, which calls call for us to lean upon you. We ask for your guidance and your blessings in these times. We ask also that you help us to realize the many mercies that you have bestowed upon us on a daily basis. Help us tonight as we work for the good of the students, our community, and our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ayers and Mr. Cole. That takes us to approval of the draft agenda for the evening. Do any members have changes or updates necessary to the draft agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, and I apologize, I didn't hear who that was. Is that Mrs. Ayers, or?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Ayers has made a motion to approve the draft agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so clearly at this point, what I would ask is, with our motions, if you would please say your name, and then you're either that you're making the motion or that you're seconding it. And if I could have someone repeat the second to approve the draft agenda.
Mr. Cole seconds the motion to approve the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. So the motion was made by Mrs. Ayers and seconded by Mr. Cole to approve the draft agenda as presented. I think in the efforts to make this work, what I'm going to do is we're going to do a roll call vote for these items. Mr. Cole, do you vote aye or nay?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Walters votes aye. Draft agenda is approved as presented five zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and I believe Mrs. Smith has a correction to the minutes. Mrs. Smith?
I did. I emailed it to you, to Linda, and to Dr. Jones.
All right, and I did see your email. Could you share with the other board members the correction you'd like to make so they can consider that?
Yes. It was just too vague, and I was very specific, I thought, in my going back and reading what I had already, what I had written in my notebook, that to in making this comment, in regard to our county's insurance, there is enough interest among the Board of Supervisors and the school board to proceed in gathering the necessary information in regard to other consultants and other insurance companies that can provide the necessary insurance coverage and wellness benefit for Palatine County and Palatine County Public Schools. The COVID-19 situation has given us much to consider in regard to how we educate our students. We just might need to rethink the importance of textbooks as guidelines in science and social studies for our elementary students. And then the other sentence that I had in there was correct. Or close enough.
All right, and I know, I believe you have emailed that that language to Mrs. Hockaday.
I did.
Okay, so is that a motion, Mrs. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I think.
Dr. Jones?
Yeah, sorry. I think Ms. Emel has her hand raised, that she wanted to add something as well, I see, just trying to keep track of everybody. And then I just had a quick comment on those minutes I just want to make for everybody's benefit.
All right, let me ask you then, if you will make your comment, and then I will recognize Mrs. Emel. I would think that it's related to Mrs. Smith's statement.
It is, it is. And of course, we're happy to make any change the board asks us to do, but I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that, you know, the minutes aren't intended to be a verbatim recording of the conversations. We've really, especially since we started audio recording and placing those recordings on the meetings, we've really pared down the minutes and just make sure we capture votes and summaries of comments. So that's why the comments were kind of structured as they were. And I know we've had this conversation a couple of times, and this was probably before Ms., I know it was before Ms. Smith entered the board, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. That's kind of why the comments were there, and that's kind of the practice that we followed in the past. We're happy to add more to the minutes and make sure there's more detail, if that's the direction the board asks us to do.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Emel?
Yes, well, I had a correction as well.
Mr. Chairman, can we do one correction at a time?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. So Mrs. Smith, hearing Dr. Jones's comments, what is your pleasure? Would you like to have the minutes revised? Is that your motion?
That is my motion, because I had, it wasn't the fact that I just now wrote that. I had it written the night that I read it to the board as my comment. So just, I felt like a whole lot of important wording was left out and meaning for what I was, the point I was trying to make. So yes, I would like to have the minutes revised.
All right, so that's your motion. Is there a second?
Second, Ken.
All right, so Mrs. Smith's motion, Mrs. Emel's second. All in favor of the
Mr. Chairman.
Or the Mr. Cole discussion?
I'm going to make a comment here, and that's that I'm going to vote against this, not because I disagree with what Ms. Smith is saying, but I'm going to vote against it because I don't want to go back to minutes where every comment that every board member has tried to make ends up in the minutes. I think that's, I'm not sure that's a good use of our time, and I'm not sure that it's going to be, it's a good it's a good practice to have. So Ms. Smith, there's nothing against you. It's procedural that I'm voting because I think that the way we're doing our minutes now, summaries are are much more easy to read for the public, and if the public wants to know more about what's, you know, more detailed, they're certainly welcome to go back and and review the video or the audio.
All right, further comment or discussion prior to the vote?
Mr. Chairman, could I interject one more thing?
Dr. Jones?
Thank you. I would say that just to maybe offer this to the board is in the past, when a board member has wanted to make a statement, and that sounds like Ms. Smith had composed something to say ahead of time as a statement, that we've entered that into the minutes as a separate, not as separate from the minutes, but as a statement from the board on a particular topic. So if if in the future, a board member has something prepared that they think is important to get into the minutes, if they would kind of preface that by saying, I have a statement that I'd like entered into the minutes, then that would make Ms. Hockaday's job easier, so she would know to do that, and it would kind of separate it out from the rest of the minute-taking that we're doing.
So can we amend the motion, Ms. Smith, to say you'd like to include a statement in the minutes?
Yes, that would be fine.
All right, so Ms. Smith, if you will withdraw your motion, and then we're certainly, we entertain a second motion.
Okay, I'll then withdraw my previous motion to amend the motion.
All right, so your motion at this point is to have it included as a statement from a board member. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, and Mrs. Emel, would you like to second that again?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, so Mrs. Smith has revised or withdrawn her original motion, revised the motion. Mrs. Emel has seconded that motion. At this point, we're ready for a vote unless there's further comment or discussion. All right, hearing none. We're going to do this by a roll call, perhaps at least until the chairman gets a little more used to recognizing just the voices. So Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
And Mr. Walters votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Mrs. Emel?
Okay, I had a correction to, on page five, under my comments. The third sentence, I wanted it to say the classrooms were sealed off after cleaning, so she was not able to go inside them. The sentence said that I had gone into some rooms, which I had not done because they were sealed off. So that's why I wanted to add that correction to it.
Okay. And that's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, and this is our second to Mrs. Emel's motion.
Susan Smith seconded that motion.
All right, Mrs. Smith seconds the motion. All in favor, we're going to try this again. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mr. Walters votes aye. Motion carries five zero. So we have in front of us a set of a set of minutes with two revisions. Are there further comment or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended minutes. Mr. Cole?
All right, we have a motion to approve the amended minutes from Mr. Cole. Is there a second?
Mrs. Ayers seconds.
Mrs. Ayers seconds the motion. All in favor, we're going to go through the vote. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mr. Walters votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is review of bills and receipts. Is there any discussion regarding the register for March 20th, March 2020? All right, hearing none. That takes us to our first public comment period for the evening. Bear with me a minute, folks, so I can pull up the certification that I need to read. And Dr. Jones, I would say that this certainly lends itself to our formal meetings in a altogether, but it's probably a little less reference for the, a little less relevance for this, but I'm going to go ahead and read it anyway. I'm going to attempt to. All right, so in accordance with school board policies, BDDH and KD, any resident of Palatine County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have three minutes, and delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation, so others may address the board. In maximum of 30 minutes, we designated for public comment this evening, please address your comments to the board as a whole, not the individual board members, the audience, or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. I understand that that really has little relevance to what we're going to try to do tonight, but in the interest of trying as best we can to be consistent with our guidance and other things and our policies, I have read that statement for the evening. At this point, we have public comment period open. We have tried this in the past. We certainly want to give participants in the community an opportunity to ask their questions. Dr. Jones talked about how we're going to go about doing that. What I'm going to do is I'm going to pause for a moment. I'm going to wait at least 30 seconds to give those participants in the community that are, that would like an opportunity to send an email or a message, rather, opportunity to do that. At the end of that period, we will check and see if there's any comment, or if there is comment already from the community, Dr. Jones or his staff can read that to us, so we can have the benefit of hearing that. But at this time, public comment period is open. We do welcome comment from the public, and certainly ask that, under these circumstances, please make your best effort to share with us your thoughts that are relevant to the operations of our schools. Dr. Jones, are there any comments at this point?
I'd like to start first with Ms. Hockaday. We gave public, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, the opportunity to call or email us with public comments up until five o'clock today. Ms. Hockaday, did you receive any?
No, sir, and I just checked, and no further have come in.
Okay. And then the other opportunity that we're giving people again is there's a chat button on this program that will bring up a whiteboard that people can add comments through the chat feature. So if there are anybody, if anybody would like to do that, then certainly we encourage and invite that participation. Mrs. Pace, do you have any comments on the chat feature? I can't seem to find it right up top.
I know, there are none there at this time.
All right, well, we're going to wait about 30 seconds. I hope everybody can enjoy the nice day. Make sure we give plenty of time to everyone who may be participating electronically to comment with us or to us if they would like. So we will do that, and then we will move forward. And to the other members, while we're waiting for this 30-second time period, if you have suggestions about ways to make this meeting move more effectively, I certainly would welcome those. I think I, like everybody else, you included, are trying your best to make these function and work well. And if you have thoughts or suggestions, please share them with me. We want these meetings to be as participatory as possible and as meaningful for the community and for the members. So, and also for Dr. Jones and his staff. If you need anything or help or support, please reach out to them, and I know that they're very happy to provide that to you. And I would thank them for what they've done so far to get us to this point in the meeting. All right, so Mrs. Hockaday, have we had any comments to date?
No, sir.
All right, so I'm a little past 30 seconds, if my clock is correct. So at this point, I'm going to bring public comment period to a close. This is our first public comment period of the evening, and it's going to take us to a series of two presentations by Dr. Jones and his staff. So Dr. Jones?
Yes, first presentation is the budget update for FY 20 and 21. So I'm going to bring up that presentation. When we practiced yesterday, this is where I kind of lost some people, so I just want to make sure can everybody see the PowerPoint at this point?
Yes. I'm still seeing public comment content.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing and then share screen. About now?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so I'm going to bring this up. And I'm going to ask Mr. Johns is going to give us an update. We're going to start first with our FY 20 budget or current year budget. Kind of talk about some steps that we're taking about that budget and making sure that we end the year with sufficient funds, and then we'll tell you what information we have at this point for next year's budget and some updates of what we're thinking about, as well as updates from the state and any information that we've heard from Palatine County. Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir, and good evening, Dr. Jones and board members. There's a whole lot of unknowns at this point in time, but I did want to just touch on a few things that we do know about the FY 20 budget. First, in looking at revenues, there are two areas that will potentially be impacted on our revenues for FY 20, and that is sales tax and the local other revenues. In regards to sales tax, we have not yet seen any impact to sales tax, and I do not anticipate seeing any until the May, June, July, and August period. We accrue two months of sales tax, so July and August sales tax will be accrued to fiscal year 20. How much it will be impacted is anybody's guess. I have included on this slide the approximately nine million dollars, which is 9.7%. I'm sorry, it's about four and a half million. It's 9.7% of our total budget. It's our intent to update the board each month on our FY 20 and FY 21 revenues. So as I start seeing an impact on these revenues, I'll let you know. In regards to the local other revenues, those are the items that the school board generates the revenues. For example, facility rentals, adult ed, summer school, student fees, tuitions, E-rate, rebates, those type of things. At the end of March, we have collected basically 75% of that $449,000 projected revenue. So I'm looking at, since schools are now closed, that we will not collect that additional $112,000. So I think that is a pretty solid shortage. There may be a few more thousand dollars come in, but we're at least looking at $110,000 or so in lost local other revenues. On the expenditure side, there are many areas that we're anticipating to have some savings. However, I'm not really seeing those yet, because while we've paid our March bills, there's usually like a 30-day lag in those vendor payments. So until we start paying April bills, I really won't see a decrease in those expenditures like utilities and fuel oil and fuel for the buses and those type of things. The same thing with payroll. In payroll, we have included everybody's salary through March, but those people such as substitutes and things like that, payroll cutoff is about the middle of the month, so the March payday included through the middle of March, and we closed the middle of March. So I'm not seeing anything yet, but we anticipate. Some areas that we do anticipate seeing some savings on are driver time for field trips and any extra time that our drivers have above contract pay. Our drivers basically are all, almost all of them are on a four-hour contract, but some of them, their daily route is four hours and 10 minutes, four hours and 15 minutes. We're paying them per their contracts. Those 10 and 15-minute periods will be a savings, and of course, the field trips will. The diesel fuel for buses, gasoline for our support vehicles, utilities, and some operating supplies. And we'll also see some savings in substitute pay. And of course, equipment purchases, we usually wait till the end of the year to buy our equipment purchases to make sure we have the money available. And so many of those have not yet been made, and so if we have to, we can delay those purchases to a future time. We have, in fact, issued some spending restrictions guidance that basically anything that's mission essential will do, if it's not, then we'll consider and maybe not do that at this time. The bottom line is, I'm not, even though I'm concerned about our revenues, there's enough flexibility with our expenditures and these projected decreases that will offset any lost revenues. So I don't have a big worry about FY 20 at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to break and see if there are any questions from board members on FY 20 budget before we move into 21?
Yeah, that's probably a logical approach. So do any members have questions about our spending for this fiscal year or our closeout?
Susan Smith has a question. Chairman, the arrangement that we had with our solar power, with, how is that going? How do we? Do we lose any, does that help us? Does it not help us?
That's a, that's a good question, Ms. Smith. I hadn't really thought to check into that. So let me let me check in unless Mr. Tibbs, I know Mr. Tibbs was online. Mr. Tibbs, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. At this time, the solar panels are just now coming up online. Dominion has given us a green light for all of our sites, so we don't have any data at this point in terms of the savings that we will have, but we're getting ready to get into the summer and to the springtime to where we have lots of daylight. So I'm anticipating that we will see some of the savings there. I just don't have that data at this point.
That will still be in play?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And my apologies, Dr. Tibbs, for calling you Mr. Tibbs.
No problem, sir. It's all good.
And Dr. Tibbs, thank you for participating tonight. We appreciate that.
Certainly.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Cole. I'm
I assume when we're doing this that we are looking hard at our buildings at this point to see what areas we can reduce the lighting and the heating and HVAC in as much as we can safely over the next two or three months to try to conserve whatever we can.
Yeah, we basically put all the buildings since we don't have staff working there, except in very small numbers for essential duty. We have put the buildings on a kind of holiday setting, both with the lights and heating and as we get into the warmer months cooling. So those are definitely in that holiday settings to hopefully save as much as we can in our facilities.
Mr. Chairman, once again, just follow up. I would guess that we are going to to realize some significant energy savings because we're not having nighttime events at any of the buildings over the next two or three months. I mean, this is a really busy time of the year traditionally for us. I think about, you know, all the, all the events and programs that go on in there are auditoriums and gymnasiums. So there should be something there. I'm hoping for the best.
Yes, I would agree that we should certainly should see some savings that will be offset some by some of the fees we receive for those events, but certainly there are plenty of school events we don't get fees for that we will see a lot of savings there.
Alright, good questions. Other questions or comments?
I do, I have a question.
Mrs. Ayers.
I know that we're seeing gas prices really, really low right now, but that really doesn't affect us because don't we lock in at a rate at the beginning of a year? So and I think the rate that we locked in at was actually much higher than it is right now.
Mr. Johns handles that, I know, and has intimate knowledge on it. Mr. Johns, do you wanna speak to that?
Yes, sir. We are locked in on diesel, but we are not locked in on gas. And so the gas purchases that we are making, we are getting, we're buying them off of the state contract price. So we are getting, we are having some savings in there. However, the school division is not really consuming diesel and gas at this point in time.
Right. Thank you.
Alright, other questions or comments? Alright, any other questions about twenty twenty?
I have one more comment on twenty.
Alright, sir.
I just did wanna also let the board know that the county is also concerned about revenues and they have asked me to do a cash flow projection for them going through the end of this fiscal year. I'm carrying that out to the start of, I'm carrying it out through September instead of June. And I'll be projecting the state revenues, the federal revenues, as well as the payroll and accounts payable expenditures by day for the county. And so just so you're aware that the county is concerned about their revenues too.
Alright, and this, maybe this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but have you received any other guidance from the county regarding this fiscal year?
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Other questions or comments? Alright, well, Mr. Johns, let's move into twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and twenty-one, there are four areas that cause concern. Obviously, sales tax will carry into FY twenty-one as long as businesses and everything is shut down. Now, part of our sales tax are for grocery stores and Food Line, Walmart and things like that. And those two businesses in Powhatan, I don't think have seen a drop in sales, but restaurants and other things like that have. Again, there's no way to estimate and I don't know what that's gonna, what that potential loss may be. The language in the appropriation, General Assembly appropriation for state budget has language on lottery funded revenues in that they will be reduced if the state does not realize all of the lottery revenue that they had budgeted for. What does that mean? I don't know. But there's a potential that there could be a reduction in lottery revenues. And of course, when you look at our state funds for FY twenty-one, they were increasing just over a million dollars over FY twenty. I believe that we will get a new calculation tool to know what the impact of the state budget changes are gonna be with the governor's revisions. And then the General Assembly coming back together on the twenty-second of this month. So next time we meet, I think we can give you an update on what state funds are gonna be. And then, of course, we don't, do not yet know what the county is gonna do with their budget. Some of the communications that I've had with the county finance director, they did realize a decrease in property tax collections in the last recession in oh eight and oh nine. Will they still, will they see that this time? I don't know. They're anticipating some decrease. And so that may cause them to adjust our appropriation for twenty-one. They've not taken that action yet. So it's, it's just an unknown. The county has said that as far as their property tax collections are concerned, fifty-five percent of them are done through an escrow account. And in the last recession, they, they did see a drop in collections of about five to six percent. So don't know what that's gonna mean, but those are the areas of concern for the revenue areas.
Now, since the- Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir.
So when will the county, when will they know that? So the next tax, tax payments are due in June?
It will be, as far as their taxes concerned, I think it would be June before they would know.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you. Appreciate that.
So going on to the next slide five, there's some other considerations that we don't have included in our projections right now. One is that we anticipate receiving federal stimulus funds. Until we get details, I don't know how much that will be. But those board members that were here on the board in oh eight, oh nine, you'll remember, we got a significant amount of money that we were able to restore some positions and restore wage cuts for staff. So we're expecting to get some significant dollars again. But I don't know when and I don't know how much and I don't know the details of it. As far as FEMA is concerned, we are tracking all of our COVID nineteen related expenses and we will be submitting a claim along with the county for some of our expenses. This again is not something that we can really budget because FEMA dollars take a long time. I mean, it might be two years before a check comes in for FEMA dollars. And so when it does, we can either use that as an expenditure refund or maybe get the board supervisors to appropriate these dollars, but they're not anything we can budget at this time. Now, in looking at our potential adjustments that can be made and for FY twenty-one, and these were taken right off of the revenue expenditure summary. We've got the seven hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-nine thousand dollars in salary increases. That was gonna be two percent for all staff except three percent for our drivers. And a few adjustments in some of our part-time rates that were below nine dollars an hour. And so will the state budget change the increase of minimum wage? Will they take away the two percent? I think that's all a given, but that's an area that can be looked at. We do have some positions that are in the budget for, four positions and that totals one hundred and sixty-six thousand. And just for, to refresh everyone's memory, there was a school counselor, a special education teacher, a library assistant and an intervention assistant. The sped teacher, special education teacher is an SOQ item and may have to stay in the budget anyway. The others will depend upon the state action with the budget. And then we did have three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in line item increases. If we had to, we could go back to the line items and start looking at those to see can we, you know, hold the line on, on those changes for a year. And anything beyond those increases are gonna have to be reductions from where we are in the FY twenty budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to give the board an update while we're talking about this because it kind of overlaps. I did have a conference call with the Department of Education at State with Dr. Lane and others. As the board members, I'm sure have read or are aware, the governor proposed his budget amendments on Saturday or got them in by Saturday at midnight. The DOE is still working on that information. We usually receive a calculation tool whenever the budget is proposed by the governor. And then after it is approved by the General Assembly, we receive another calculation tool. Because the General Assembly is slated to act on this on the twenty-second, just next week, we're only gonna receive one calculation tool and that will be after the General Assembly acts. So we won't get a lot of specifics until next week, next Friday at the earliest. I would say it would probably be even that last week in April before, the week of April twenty-seventh, before we receive a lot of detail. I did get some information from them and some of it is good news. And at first, the good news is, is that re-benchmarking is still in the governor's budget, re-benchmarking of SOQs. This is a large part of our increase that we receive from the state as they re-benchmark and, and the governor decided to keep that in the budget because it is constitutionally required that re-benchmarking occur. So that's good news. Again, we don't know what that looks like. We also were told that there was some language being used instead of reductions to the budget that was approved by the General Assembly. The term that they're using is unallotment. And they're using that as a term because while it's not gonna be included in the budget at this time, if revenue numbers come back better or quicker than anticipated or once we know more what revenue is, the General Assembly may reconvene and some of these items may be added back in. But right now, they're not funded in the governor's current budget. That includes funding for cost to compete, which is for some Northern Virginia localities, protection against enrollment loss, the at-risk add-on from the general fund. The compensation supplement or raises are not currently funded by the state. So that's our two percent funding that we were hoping to receive from the state is not funded currently. It's not allotted. No loss funding for the composite index is suspended. And then the preschool increase was suspended. We also found out that stricken from the budget completely, so will not be in next year's budget, are, is funding for increased school counselors. So we will not be receiving funding for that position, which we did add a position in. We did, even though we won't receive a detailed calculation tool from the DOE, they are gonna give us a half sheet with some summary information. They're hoping to get that to us by Thursday. So as soon as we have that information from the DOE with some more specifics, we will share that with the board. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that or Mr. Johns on any of these FY twenty-one issues.
Alright, so any questions for Dr. Jones or Mr. Jones?
Email question, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Ema.
The, on slide six, the behavior intervention assistant at the middle school. We've got to find the money for that. That, that's a necessity. After speaking with the principal and then many parents and many teachers feel that this position is gonna bring continuity to the middle school for behavior issues. So I, I hope that we can find the money to fund that position.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Ema. Other questions or comments?
Susan Smith?
Mrs. Smith.
I would also like to, with Mrs. Ema, say that I feel like after speaking with the principal there, that this person, this behavioral intervention assistant is a piece that's missing from that behavior program that she's trying to implement. And I think the person that she has in mind to take this position is someone that is, has the experience. So it's not like we're just getting somebody to sit on the chair. This woman knows what she's supposed to be doing with these students when they come to her. And also having talked to some of the teachers there and even listening to the principal, that she also feels that this is a great need to be able to make this program whole with this person. So I, I hope that there is some way that we can find the money, shift monies around from wherever to keep, keep that position for this upcoming year.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Jones?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, we certainly recognize the importance of that position. And we've really done a nice job in the last couple of months based on some questions from board members, but also just us looking at how we're using staff, whether that's Dr. Parker in HR or Dr. Prince with our special education, really looking at our instructional assistants and how we're using them. So even if we're not able to add this instructional behavior specialist, which was at an instructional assistant pay grade anyway, we may be able to reallocate an existing IA position to that function. So even if there's not additional dollars because we have to reduce dollars, we may reprioritize that as more important and be able to move that vacant IA position over there to fill that position.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Jones. Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for that.
You're welcome.
Alright, any further questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Mr. Johns. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Okay. And I'm gonna go ahead and just move on to the next presentation, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, please.
Alright, and this is our next present, oops. Stop sharing. Alright, so this, we wanted to give you an update. We're, today was day one of phase two of our distance learning plan after a spring break. So we'd like to give you an update on kind of where we are, share some examples of what was shared with parents and students. And then give you a summary of what that would look like and then how we're gonna be monitoring what our students are learning. I'm gonna ask Dr. Amahundra to start off and Dr. Prince will also be joining us in talking about how we're continuing with learning even while our schools are closed for the remainder of this year. Dr. Amahundra?
Great, good evening, everybody. And we can go to the first slide, Dr. Jones. So I wanted to do a little bit of a recap first on where we've been. Over six weeks ago, Dr. Jones sat down. I don't think anything is quite there yet, but we might wanna start thinking about getting prepared for if there are any changes with the way that we deliver instruction in the coming weeks. for if there are any changes with the way that we deliver instruction in the coming weeks. And he clearly was clairvoyant on that and started the process in what we thought was a very timely manner that would give us an opportunity to do some planning in advance. So March third, we sat down with the instructional team and began that preparedness discussion with a goal of putting together some materials over the course of the next ten to fourteen days. Things changed rapidly, and on March twelfth, we announced that we were going to close schools. That was a Thursday, that we were going to be closing effective, the sixteenth was the following Monday, for two weeks. So we had to spring into action, and luckily, we had some things already in the works so that we could roll out phase one of what we are now seeing as our preparedness plan. And that phase one was to review and enrich. So we created materials at the elementary level that we distributed to all elementary students on March thirteenth, that Friday, before they went home. And they received two to three works worth of activities during that timeframe. March sixteenth, which was the following Monday, we began distributing lessons to secondary students through spring break. So we did have phase one, and it was all focused on reviewing and enriching as we were trying to determine the best way to engage with our students during their absence. Again, at that point, not knowing that we were going to be out for any extended period of time other than those first three weeks. During that timeframe, we also decided that it was important for us to reflect on how things were going. So we issued a parent survey about phase one and got some feedback about how things were going for them, what was working for them, how much time and face time they were required to provide to their students as parents slash teachers in the home, what barriers that they were finding to implementing the activities. And so that guided us as we were prepping for phase two. Phase two became something where we were discussing how we can have some continuity of our learning. And so the that week of March twenty-fifth, the next week or so, we were preparing for all sorts of things at both the elementary and secondary level. We mastered Zoom, I think, in that timeframe with video conferencing at over fifty. Video conferences and meetings, we met with each grade level at elementary and also with our coaches and our instructional support team with each grade level. We met with every content area team at the secondary level. So we're busy getting feedback from them and talking about the best way to put together lessons and activities. And then last week, while we were on spring break, we had identified some of those barriers as to why students may not be able to access instruction. So we worked on mitigating some of those barriers, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. And then, as Dr. Jones says, we rolled out phase two today. Next slide. So we kind of wanted to set the tone of what the goal is for this learning, this time for learning. And so I mentioned continuity of instruction. We know that at some point, we will have our students return to the classroom, and we need to make sure that they are ready for that future learning. So we looked at identifying those essential skills that the students would be missing during this timeframe so that when they return to our classrooms, that they're ready to pick up where they left off or that we have a plan in place to transition students who may not have been able to access everything. Along with that, then we looked at the equity of learning opportunities. And this is our biggest challenge because of whether it's demographics or geography. It it can be or just butt out the fact that we can't see people face to face or interact with them. This equity is is one of our biggest concerns, and we'll continue to work towards it. So we will be devising for those students who have barriers to distance learning, individualized and personalized plans. And again, I'll speak to that a little bit more in a minute. And as I mentioned earlier, that we wanted to make sure that we were balancing essential skills and concepts, but also understanding that this is a stressful time for our families, that they all have unique situations, that we are providing continuity of instruction, but also knowing that this may burden some of our families in a way that they they may not be able to meet this challenge. So we're working on balancing that as well. Next slide. So at elementary, they're issuing weekly calendars, and our first calendar went out today. And on the screen is just an outline of how those are prepared. This first week, we used our specialists to create the calendars so that we could get a sense of how things would flow with some of the timeframes that you'll see there. We wanted to make sure that we didn't have more than two to three hours per grade at grades three through five and not more than two hours per day for K through two. We also now will roll that out, and teachers will be creating the activities for the subsequent weeks. And and students will get a calendar at the beginning of each week for them to have activities to participate in. And those are being distributed via Seesaw. And then at the secondary level, this is going to look a little different because each content area has different needs. So our classroom teachers are providing these lessons and activities based on their needs. There is an overview that is happening at both the middle and high school level. So it is a little bit easier for families to access and students to access. And you can see a sample of of what that overview looks like by a content area from prior to this week. Again, putting some maximums of timeframes on our teachers so that they understand that we need to be respectful of families' ability to implement this and also encouraging families to take a look at what we anticipate the timeframes for each of these activities would be so that if if it's taking longer, we can adjust. And as we reflect on how things are progressing with providing these activities, we may need to revise as we go. And again, we're using Schoology for this, and both our our high school students especially are extremely comfortable with Schoology. Middle school is in their second year of using it consistently. And so that's allowing us to roll that out via Schoology. But again, we're working with individual families who are not able to use Schoology for this purpose. Next slide. How we're going to grade things. You know, it's really about grading is a topic that comes up in a wide variety of forums. But more specifically about it, in this situation, we've got students who may or may not be able to access things, who may or may not be able to submit things in a timely manner. So we wanted to make sure that we were fair and thoughtful about how we would grade. We put together a committee of teachers at all of the levels, as well as some instructional folks, to talk about what grading may look like. We certainly also always have discussions among our regional partners to see what might be working, especially because we know we're not the only ones going through this process. And students will may move from county to county or locality to locality or be be measured against other peers in other areas. So we want to make sure that we were as consistent as possible, but also specifically the needs of the students. So in the third quarter, the plan is for our grades to have closed out March thirteenth. That's when students walked out the door for the closure. At the secondary level, they absolutely can make up any work that they have that has not been completed for marking period three. And teachers are working individually with students for that. And that will be completed by May fourth, and then we'll update grades for marking period three. The elementary, they had outstanding assignments. Those will be excused. And if there's a specific need, because a student with disability needs extra assistance or something that's an isolated issue, we certainly have teachers can work individually with students as needed. For the fourth quarter, that begins today. So the activities will be based on effort and completion. And with the resulting resulting of a pass or fail grade, they will be having teachers enter information into Power Teacher Pro, which is our grading program. And through that, we will be able to provide feedback, which really is what grading is about. Grading is about letting students know how they are doing and getting the feedback on how they are progressing and growing in their coursework. But then for their year-end grade, for year-long courses, we're going to take the summation of semester one, and that will average as sixty-seven percent of their final grade. And quarter three will be thirty-three percent of their final grade. And then any student who did not have a passing grade at the end of the third nine weeks will be able to use coursework and work with their teacher to see about improving that grade so that they can have an make an effort to pass the course for the year. Next slide. So just we do have a wide also additional wide variety of supports that are in place. Certainly, our teachers are biggest support. Coaches and specialists have been working behind the scenes with initial lesson planning and activities, but that will transition to our teachers and instructional assistants. Our instructional assistants also have been able to help us with modifying instruction, and we'll be doing more of that as we move forward and utilize them in a different way. And we will be doing some personalized monitoring as needed. Have asked our principals to touch base with the teachers in the coming days so that by the twenty-fourth, we will know who has not accessed instruction or who is not turning in instruction so that we can or any of their work so that we can create some personalized plans for those students. Social emotional supports are in place as well. Our school counselors have all been assigned Google Voice phone numbers, and that allows them to make personal phone calls or receive personal phone calls from students and not have to wait for a Zoom meeting or a video conference with them. Our social worker has compiled an exhaustive list of resources for both parents and students that are available through the community, and that has been helpful for many of our families. And also, Operation School Supply has worked with us to donate school supplies, and those will be available during meal pickups in the coming weeks. And then finally, our biggest support has been trying to leverage technology as much as possible. We've issued Chromebooks to students who wanted them in grades K through five. We've got weekly help desks open, live help desks open each week at the schools as well as a help desk email that is being monitored regularly. We've got an order out for webcams for teachers, those have not yet arrived. I mentioned Zoom that we're using for video conferencing, both for teachers and staff, as well as the ability to use that with students. We're using our learning management systems of Schoology and Seesaw as our platforms for communicating with students and parents. This week, we received our hotspots, and so we're working on our distribution plan for hotspots that we have for both students and teachers. And then we mentioned the original survey, but we'll continue to survey and follow up with families in need of technical support. So I mentioned the original parent survey that we did. We actually also surveyed, we identified all of the students that teachers knew had not been accessing technology with regularity at home. And we specifically surveyed those students. And Dr. Jones, if you'll go to the next slide, I'll show you the results of that survey. So at the elementary level, we asked them, at all levels, we asked them, yes, I need some additional support. Could you please contact us? Nope, we don't need any additional support. We're good at home. And then we did have a group of people who did not respond. So we had about eighty families who said, yes, please contact us. Last week, did each of those families to personalize a plan for those families. And then these other three hundred that said that have not responded to either of the surveys that we sent out, we will be monitoring those in the next ten school days, actually nine school days. And if they are not participating, we will work on personalized plans by reaching out to them individually as well.
Again, Tracy, this survey went out to what group of parents?
Sure. So this, again, it's almost five hundred families. And those were identified, the teachers at the elementary level identified any student who they knew had not been accessing technology from home with regularity by their Seesaw interaction or things where they'd had emails from parents who said, we can't access. And so they created a comprehensive list for us. At the middle school and the high school level, Maury Pace and Gillian Lambert were able to go into all of the English classes and identify students who had not been accessing Schoology in this first three weeks of distance learning. And we reached out to all of them as well. So these almost five hundred families, we surveyed them a week ago Friday and a week ago today, Monday. So we surveyed them twice to try to get as many participants as we could. Again, then we reached out to them individually and have created personalized plans for those eighty, seventy-eight families, and will monitor these additional three hundred in the next week and a half.
Excuse me, can you email, Mr. Chairman? So, Dr. Amahundra, the did you say this survey is not the parent survey that was sent through the phone?
Correct. Well, it was sent through the phone, but it only was to targeted identified families. So if there if the families had not been accessing either Seesaw or technology of some sort at the elementary level that were identified by parent, by teachers, rather, or at the secondary level.
Yeah, no, I was, I'm a little bit confused because we got, both of my children participated, but we've got the survey. So I thought everybody was getting the survey.
We did. We did. Go ahead.
Everybody received a survey on March twenty-fifth. That was just a general feedback on how things were going overall with distance learning. But when we received that, when we evaluated that survey, we realized we had some work to do with individual families who were telling us that there were issues with distance learning in their homes. And so. Yes, and that first survey, unfortunately, the first survey was anonymous. So we didn't have the names of the people who were telling us they were struggling with technology. So we went to our teachers who generally know best about who has accessed and who hasn't. And again, in these next nine, eight or nine days, we really are going to be monitoring because we need to make personalized plans for students who aren't accessing.
Okay. So there's approximately three hundred and twelve families.
That we have not heard from, one way or the other. And they could be the, no, we're good, but they just didn't let us know that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to transition to Dr. Prince. Talk about what we're doing specifically with our exceptional education students.
Good evening, school board members. Just to give you an update, our exceptional education department has been involved in the planning process with the instruction team. So we've been working hand in hand. As a division, our focus has been on continuing to work with our mandated timelines just to make sure that we are in compliance, and we're doing well with that. Our lead teachers and our case managers have been holding meetings with parents via Zoom and conference call. For those parents that are in agreement, we've chosen to extend timelines as necessary. Our case managers and our students' teachers have been in contact. That's on a weekly basis. For those students and parents that we have been unable to be in contact with, we will have those names submitted, and we will follow up in next steps towards the end of next week. So we will be following through either with extended phone calls, looking at phone numbers, as well as sending out mail to those parents. We are using our Parent Resource Center, continuing to have that available for support for parents. And to give you an update for our preschool BPI Head Start, as you know, it's very important that we keep instruction going for early childhood students. The teams that Pocahontas and Flat Rock have been planning together, and we are using new curriculum or new curriculum to develop packets of materials for those students. Their teachers have been able to maintain contact with parents through Seesaw as well as personal contact with each parent. Students in this program will also receive kindergarten readiness packets so that parents are aware of things that they need to work with their child on to be prepared for kindergarten. So that's a big focus for us. Our specialized instruction for our CBI and our Level Two students is very important. Those are our smaller classes that are located within some of our schools. Those teachers are working hard to be in contact with those parents. We do have teachers that are delivering packets to parents. And again, that is with the parental permission and just dropping it off at the homes. They're making contact with those parents just to make sure that they're getting the supports they needed. Our related service providers are also providing support to those parents just to make sure that they're getting the equipment that we might have at school that they would need at home to help with those students. Our postgraduates are some of our students that they have graduated, but they are still with us until they are twenty-two. We are offering supports to those families, connecting them with resources that are in our community. So that continues to happen. Our outside placement students that are not facilitated within our division but that are at other facilities, we are making sure that they are being compliant and that they are also preparing resources for those students. Our CPMT committee is making sure that we are holding those resources, making sure that we're holding them accountable for providing for those students that are also still a part of our division, but they are not being serviced within our schools. I'll turn that over back over to Tracy unless you have questions.
Dr. Prince.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Sorry, Mr. Walters, Chairman. That our second Head Start class, is that also on the chopping? That, our second Head Start class, is that also on the chopping block? Or is that already in place?
We will not have a second Head Start class. Again, that is coming from the city of Richmond, and they have informed us that we will not be able to have a second Head Start class. Our goal was to look at our numbers for an additional BPI class, which would be one of our classes. And I think from what I heard earlier from Dr. Jones is that a preschool program or additional class might be taken from the budget, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, we're still waiting. I mean, they, what we heard today was that there would, that that was in that unallotted, and that they were hoping to add that back into the budget if revenues proceed. But until we get the detailed calculation till we really won't know. So unfortunately, it looks like we may not be able to start that additional preschool class we were hoping to next year. But if there's any way we can, we certainly will.
So we're continuing to collect applications at this point. So it's my hopes that we have a large number of applicants so that we are able to say we have students that are in need. And if they are on the waiting list, I know that that's the big thing. As long as we have a waiting list and we can support students that are here, we can say that we are reaching out to our families. So please encourage our community members to apply if they have a student that's eligible.
Well, what happens when the students that were in, in the class, the Head Start class this year, do they come back again next year automatically? Or, because don't you have like a student number cutoff for those classes?
We do. So we have three-year-olds and we have four-year-olds in Head Start. For our four-year-olds, they will go to kindergarten next year. So they automatically will go to kindergarten. For our three-year-olds, there are seven spots that we have for those students. They will automatically roll into a four, into the four-year-old class, but they don't necessarily have to remain in Head Start. They could go into our BPI class. So again, we have spots for those students, they don't go without having a spot.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Amahundra, you want to talk about next steps?
So we're going to monitor these first two weeks of Phase Two, as I mentioned for earlier, for barriers that students may be having to accessing, but also just to find out how things are going. And the good news is, we already had parents and teachers provide us with feedback in this first day. So we're getting feedback, and the mantra has been reflecting and revising. So we're going to continue to reflect on the activities that we're providing to students and make sure that we're revising them so that they are able to be implemented in the home with their families. And then we're going to distribute our tech supports as they arrive. As I mentioned, we've received our first shipment of our hotspots, so we're working on the distribution plan for that through the help desk this week. We also are anticipating arrival of webcams in the next week or so, and that's for our teachers to use to do video conferencing with families and students rather, and/or with colleagues. And so as they, as we continue to get those, we will continue to distribute those. We also, as I mentioned, will reach out to families who are not participating. We'll develop any additional support plans that we can for those students that may have limited access, up to and including providing paper copies for families. And then the big picture is to plan for Phase Three, which is how we're going to address any gaps that we find that we've had in student learning as we transition back to our regular instructional programs. So that may be something that is in the form of a revised summer school program or some sort of different summer programming, something that may be implemented in the fall. But really, we're just going to have to monitor how things are going and then make a decision on how we want to best support students as we transition back to the regular classroom. And that's where we are.
All right, thank you, Dr. Amahundra and Dr. Prince. We've asked questions throughout the presentation. Do we have other questions? Mrs. Smith, I see you waving your hand.
Yeah, yes, of course. Tracy, when you made in the slide, it talked about Google Voice with the school counselors. Do the parents know how to access these counselors through that? Great question. So what we did was, on each of our websites, where they normally would access the school counselors, where they would go to get their email addresses, this Google Voice number is placed there. And so they dial that number, and then that connects to the counselor's home phone or their cellphone, but then they're not directly accessing the home phone or cellphone of that person. We actually have also talked about how we can roll that out to other faculty members who may be interested in using that kind of system. And Maury Pace and her crew have put together some instructions on how to make that happen. So we will continue to use Google Voice. But as far as the counselors specifically, it is advertised on our school website so that they know how to contact those folks directly. And can you give me some kind of, some examples of how, I mean, is there a certain type of situation that, that the counselors will deal with, but not others? Or is this like a motivational thing? Can it be used as a motivational type? If parents are having a hard time with their students completing the assignments and staying focused on the work, would this be a number to call so that the counselor could give that extra voice of encouragement to the children? Absolutely, and so we can use it for a wide variety of things. That certainly is one, and parents can always access counselors. They can access school administrators or teachers for that kind of thing. The counselors also have created lessons for, for our students. And I know the middle school pushed theirs out, one of theirs out yesterday. And it's actually a lesson that they can do with the families, the families can do together about how they're dealing with some of the challenges of this pandemic. And then I will give a great example at the high school level, especially with our seniors who are very nervous about what's going on with scholarships and what's going on with college applications and what's going on with their transcripts. This is a way for them not just to email their counselor, but to sit down and have a conversation and not just get an answer, but alleviate some of their anxiety about this. So those are just a couple of examples. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Emel, did you have a question?
Yes, I had quite a few questions. I didn't know we were asking as we went along, so if I could go back a couple slides. Well, first, the hotspots. On Slide Seven, the technology, how many, how many are still available? A lot of, and how do people contact? Do they contact those central office or each principal, or how's that working?
So we purchased 200 hotspots, and we have a list of them that are being, a list of teachers and students that are receiving those. And I can get you a final number for you for that. We do have extras though. And again, we reached out to families based on what we anticipated or what we learned from the survey that we did. And we talked to them, and that's how we determined who was going to receive a hotspot. But if there is a person that needs a hotspot, they can email through that help desk number. They can contact their school principal, that's who's been coordinating the bear, or mitigating some of the barriers to, to instruction. And one of the things that the principals did first before just assigning a hotspot was talked through what some of their alternatives may be in lieu of a hotspot. Because while a hotspot is great, for many folks, you have to have good cell service in your home to be able to actually use the hotspot. So if you don't have good cell service, the hotspot is not a solution for you. So then we worked through other solutions that may work for those families. And then the other part of the hotspot is, it does not have unlimited data on it. So again, it's not something that may be used as a resource throughout the household. It's going to be very limited to just maybe downloading the activities. Then they can work on those activities, and then they can upload it using the hotspot. So it is a good solution for many folks, but there are some caveats to them. But if you're, if they are looking for them, they can contact their school principal, and we can add them to the list.
Okay, yeah, because as we know, District Five has a lot of problems with getting internet. And, yeah, and cell service, so we're double whammy out here. Also, I, like a lot of, I got a call today that they do have internet, but when they have to download videos and that sort of thing, it takes up a lot of their data, so they don't like to do that because of that reason. So I wanted to share that today, that I
And I would encourage them as they're working through some of those things, and there are some of those concerns, that teachers, as they're developing activities, may have alternatives for them, and so encourage them to reach out to their teacher and specifically state that. And then if the teacher cannot troubleshoot with them, we can find alternatives at the division level for them.
Right. Well, I had another parent who said today that they did call the teacher about an issue, and, but the teacher said that they did not make the lessons for this week, that it was the county and the specialists. So that brings me to the other, another question. So next week then, are the individual classroom teachers, I guess I'm speaking at the elementary level, right? Because the middle, middle school and high school, the teachers are doing their lessons, correct?
Correct. And at the elementary level, again, as we were doing this first transition to a, to using technology, as, as I mentioned, the first three weeks at the elementary level, they got paper packets. So this was the first run in utilizing Seesaw and technology. So the specialists offered to provide support with creating the lessons and the activities, and the teachers were able to review those lessons in advance, and then they shared them with their, with their students. So, and could do a little bit of personalization to those activities when they pushed it out to their families. But coming, moving forward, we've got a template, and they're going to be creating lessons for their students.
Each individual classroom teacher?
Right.
Okay. Well, as a content, as a grade level, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Emel, could I interrupt just a moment?
Sure.
I, I just like, would like to ask a follow-up towards what you just said, or a statement. Dr. Jones or Dr. Amahundra, can you share with us the feedback or the number of questions or concerns that are expressed just so we get a feeling for how many people are struggling with this from a technology perspective? Like, like Mrs. Emel, District Four, we have some areas that are very challenged with cellphone coverage and other things and internet coverage. And I'd like to better understand, maybe, and I suspect Mrs. Emel would too, how many people are really being challenged by these, this learning aspect of this?
Well, that goes back, that's what this number is. So it's about 500 families that we have heard from either at the elementary level that teachers have identified as not accessing or being able to access technology. And at the middle and the high school, it's based on whether they have accessed Schoology in the past on a regular basis.
Right, and I understand, I think that 312 number though, is, that's going to become evident pretty quickly if there's a problem.
Yeah.
So that, that's what I'm more, I guess, more interested in particularly, is are you getting 10 or 15 inquiries, or are you getting 150 inquiries?
I got one email today from a parent. I'm sure Dr. Amahundra maybe got a few more, but it hasn't, you know, we haven't been inundated with that. So mainly, it's the teachers getting used to this format and them, but we haven't heard a lot from the parents yet. But again, this was the first day. So we're going to monitor it closely and, you know, reflect and revise as we get feedback from parents. You know, the one that I heard from was a Flat Rock parent who said, you know, this is too much. We, working parents, we can't handle all this, it's too stressful, those types of things. I mean, that's the feedback that we want. So the one, we can work with that individual family, but also take a look at what we're doing as a whole and make any adjustments that we may need to.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I, I am just really concerned about folks in my district. Just as Mrs. Emel said, we, there's just a lot of areas in District Four where cellphone coverage is poor, the internet, the availability of reliable internet service is tough. And I just want to make sure those people are not left behind as we move through this process.
They, they absolutely will not be. They're going to get really a personalized plan of action moving forward where we work with that family, and that's what we did a lot last week. We had a lot of staff that were working over spring break, reaching out to those families and saying, what can we do for you? What's the best solution? Here are some options. And, you know, whatever that looks like, we're going to make sure we can give it to them so that they can be successful.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Emel, thank you for letting me ask a follow-up question, I appreciate it.
And if I may, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, of the 19 families that the middle school contacted that were requesting contact, only one family, after they went through all of the strategies and the options that we could provide to them, only one of them requested a paper copy. So we were able to mitigate 18 families that had expressed concerns with accessing technology.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Amahundra. Mrs. Emel, again, thank you for letting me ask a follow-up question.
You're welcome, Mr. Walters. So then, this is good, but so then we need to have parents that are struggling. As Dr. Jones said, you know, parents are saying that it's too much, and they're, they're struggling with what they have to do or have their children accomplish. So these parents then should be calling who?
Should start, start first with the teacher, just like they would normally do if they're having issues in a classroom. Start first with the teacher and express those concerns with the teachers. The principals are still in contact with their teachers, so they'll gather that information as well. And the teacher can refer the parent to a counselor, if it's a counselor issue, or technology, if it's a technology issue, or another set of supports.
Okay, and then my last question has to do with the grading. I guess, was it Slide Six? I wanted to understand, what is Power Teacher Pro?
That's Power School.
Well, is it two different programs, or is it just one program, or I'm confused?
It's the gradebook component of the Power School. When you look at your, when you see grades online, it's things that, that teachers have entered into Power Teacher Pro, and then a parent can see it online.
So that's just the portal, your gradebook, that you would normally check your students' grades on?
Okay, so that has to do with the teachers then, and not the parent side?
Correct. It's just the way for the parents to check up on how their students are doing, and the students to check up. One of the things we heard from the board at the last meeting is they wanted a consistent way to, for parents to be able to check and make sure their students have completed their work. So that's what we worked through in terms of using Power Teacher Pro to report grades in a consistent way, or the pass/fail-to-completion of the grades.
Okay, so that's the part I'm confused with. It's always been called Power School. So that if I, I've got the app on my phone, if I want to check my children's grades, I look up Power School.
That's, it's the same program. We're just using a different term for the specific gradebook function of Power School. When we talk about Power School, we're talking about how our whole student information system. So we'll change that so that it's clear for, for parents that they're just checking the Power School app.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure that
Yeah.
that's what it is, okay.
Yep.
Okay, and then, speaking of the grading parts, so the, the year-end grade, I've gotten some feedback that, okay, if we, if we have quarter one and quarter two and exam one was 67%, and then quarter three is 33%, then that is 100%. So what will happen then if, if a, if a student fails the fourth quarter, then they could automatically fail the fourth quarter, correct? And still pass, because we've already said that it's 100%?
Yeah, well, what we've said is, that would certainly be great for students that have been successful throughout the year. What we, you know, and this is, again, we're working on in a unique situation, but what we're thinking is, is that in order for that student to be successful and moving forward, they're going to have to have a pass designation in fourth quarter. And all that means is make an effort and show. So there is still that accountability for the fourth quarter.
Okay, and so our third and fourth quarter is separate. When we first talked, it was going to be combined, so
Right, that, that was the thinking originally, but then when we, you kind of went away from enrichment to a continuity of learning and having to do it for this extended period of time, we decided just to separate out the third and fourth quarter.
Okay, so each quarter is separate.
Yep.
All right, that's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Jones, let me ask you a follow-up question to that. And it's, I think it's the opposite side of that equation. So in, in a normal circum- In in a normal circumstance, if you had a student who had done poorly the first semester and then had done well the second semester, they're roughly equivalent fifty fifty. Roughly, so that can balance it out. But then. The percentages that are laid out there are much different, and I understand it's a different situation.
Yep.
But i- is that, is that how you're going to try to balance it for students? Uh, I see that it says that if at the end of the third quarter, if they're not passing the class at that point, they're going to have an opportunity to have graded material. Is that how it's going to work out? That it's going to be about a fifty fifty proposition again?
It it's going to be as closely as we can. Certainly, any student that wasn't doing well and had shown some progress through the third nine weeks. We're going to give teachers the option of giving them additional assignments um to continue pulling their grade up. Um, and how we work that out, that's kind of on an individual basis. Um, but really. The grading part of it, because we're not grading assignments, because it would not be fair and equitable, is. Contained in those first three quarters. But if a student wasn't passing or wasn't being successful. We are going to give them the option of continuing with graded work. So we may see some individual students that would have a grade for that fourth quarter, uh particularly a senior who wasn't on track to graduate. We're going to give that senior every opportunity. So they may not, they may not elect based on their conversation and their individual plan. To take a pass fail that fourth quarter, they may take a graded because they need that grade in order to bring their grade up for the year.
And that's for middle and high school?
We're thinking mainly middle, high school, just because of GPA and the ramifications of that at the high school level. But certainly, if we're looking at a student being successful at the middle school, then we may um offer that opportunity to them.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished, Mr. Walters?
Uh, you know, Ms. Emo, I think actually I'm thinking about that answer because it talking about GPA for college and other things, and I recognize everyone. Statewide is going to be dealing with this issue in some fashion. Is this the same type of guidance? Is this guidance provided by DOE or is this our, is this your recommendation on how this is going to work or? I I guess I I am thinking about that student maybe who is um, you know, doing very well or or maybe not doing as well. But in either case, they're missing a good portion of their opportunity to improve the grade in the second semester.
Yeah, um, to answer your question, this is, there is no guidance from um the state on this. But this is, we have had several conversations with uh Region One um school divisions, which are all the ones in central Virginia. M- most of them, if not all of them, are following this model. Of taking some sort of configuration of the first nine weeks for the grades. I don't know of any school division that's actually grading work in the fourth quarter. Uh, we have some school divisions, a smaller, very small number, that aren't doing any new instruction the fourth quarter. It's all just enrichment, um and they're basically stopping their new learning as of March thirteen.
All right, thank you. And I'm just trying to understand what you're presenting.
Yeah, no, no, it's good question.
I I can discuss it intelligently if I'm asked questions about it. So.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Walters, one of the things.
I'm sorry, Dr. Oh, my hundred.
Um, one of the things that we do as uh that we provide for our seniors as they go to college is we create a um. A paper that they that goes with their transcripts that gives information about grading and quartiles and um test scores. Uh, and the AP courses that we offer, and we will update that. Um, so normally we have what normal grading scale is and. The percentages for each of our quarters. We'll update it so that it will reflect that this was what was used during this timeframe. So that when the others, when their colleges look at it, they'll know if they're comparing apples to oranges. If it was our grading system versus Goochlin's grading system, they'll understand the differences for our students.
Okay, thank you for adding that. Um, Mrs. Emo, did you, did you have a follow up question?
Yes, please. Um, so I. The the fourth nine weeks with middle school and high school, so if a student, um, you know. Didn't do their best work um and the teacher knew they could do better, um. They would, they can give them an F for failing it because it wasn't what it was supposed to be, correct?
They could. I think that would be something that, um, you know, there would be conversations with the parent and and communication, just like we regularly give feedback to students on how they're doing. Uh, we wouldn't want to catch anybody by surprise for that. We also want to take into account that this is a unique situation and and this is something where. Um, you know, students have a lot of stress in their life, families have a lot of stress, so we don't want to add too much on it. But certainly, if a student is not going through, is just going through the motions, not doing work that's to their best level. Then that would be conversations that the teacher would have and there would be some ramifications for that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand. So if um. A- as as a parent is looking at Power School, if if there are um, like, say there's five grades this week. Um, and and um, three of them were passing and two of them were failing, well, then they averages to a pass just for this week. Is that how you understand how they're going to be doing it? Or I guess. It's I've gotten a few comments from teachers that they're not certain on how to grade. And then as a parent, um. The parents want to understand, they get it that it's pass and fail the whole nine weeks, but how do you?
All right, let me let Dr. Oh, my hundred talk about what it would look like in the grade book and then answer your question.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the the first thing is, is in the grade book, uh, teachers will list their activities just like they always do. And the assignment will be given either a um completed or a not completed. So a check mark is all that will go in the grade book. However, in order to provide feedback, teachers may use the comments section and. Um, in that comment section, if they'd like to give them um information about four out of five were correct or eighty percent was correct, or you need to have. Um, a better analysis of Bay Wolf, whatever that that is, they can provide the feedback in the comments section. But it really will just be a, all they will see from a grade perspective, instead of the numerical grade, will be a green check mark. Um, and the teachers have received that information. When we met with the principals this morning. Um, we discussed the fact that they do want additional information about what grades will look like, and we have been working on more specifics for that. So the teachers will have uh more answers to some of those questions similar to what you're asking, Mrs. Emo.
Okay, so that's all coming then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I guess I guess people just wanted to know if you thought of it, and obviously you have. So um, I appreciate you getting those answers to them and and so that they can then. Um, let the parents know of what to expect, um, because it's going to be all new. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Emo. Other other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this this is Mr. Cole.
This is Cole.
Um, just a couple of comments and 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 one thing is. I I am very uh happy to hear that we are working as hard as we can to make sure that uh. Parents and families that have issues with internet and issues with given material or or we're trying to do our best to intercede and try and try to make it work for them. Uh, I think the equity piece is a piece that that I'm most concerned about at this point. Uh, and you know. Whatever we do, we want to do, make sure that every student has an opportunity, and it sounds like we're trying our best to do that. The other thing that I'm that I'm gratified to hear is that uh. There's the students are really in a a no lose situation here, basically, uh, that they can enhance their grade, but. You know, as long as they're doing work, they're they're not, their grade probably isn't going to be affected adversely unless there's a conversation with the parents and and that. And that's good. So so what what I'm hearing is we're doing everything we can to try to to make this fair to students. And at the same time, trying to challenge them and give them work so they'll be prepared for next year. You know, we're we're in a time where it's going to, there are no. Easy guidelines here and no easy right and wrong answers. We're kind of inventing this as we go along. So. So I I suspect there's, you know, that that we're going to learn something from this, and and I appreciate the flexibility. And the hard work that our staff is is doing to try to make this happen. Uh, so so that's my first comment. The second comment is that we are learning a lot from what we're doing. And uh, you know, I, you know, as we move through this, we're we're kind of building the boat as we flow down the stream, which is good. But I but I, the other thing is that I hope that we'll find some some uh. Some information that we've learned here that we'll be able to apply to next, to whenever we get back to school, we'll be able to apply this to enhance our learning. It when we're back in regular session. Well, that's through the opportunity to offer some on line, more online classes. That our teachers have already written because they're, they figured out how to do it this this quarter. Whether it's opportunity to offer some online, some some intervention or remediation, because we figured out how to do it that also. So. Uh, you know, yes, there are lots of questions that people have, and my comment to parents and to students is contact your teachers. You know, that's where you're going to get the best information. Uh, at least start there anyway. And and once again, I I just want to commend our staff for doing what they're doing at this point. It sounds like, you know, it's you're doing terrific work.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other comments or questions?
I do.
Mrs. Ayers.
Yes, um, my comment is just about appreciation and what a difficult situation that we're in. And one of the beauties about living in a community that is the size that we have. And having our teachers and administrators be so dedicated to each and every one of our students. Um, it really touches my heart that people are working so hard, parents, students, teachers, administrators. Everyone is coming together in this community to make this experience as best as it can be for our students and everyone involved. So just um thank you um to everyone for their hard work.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ayers. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Dr. Jones will move on to the next item on the agenda, next items on the agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Walters, you can send agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a few items on the consent agenda this month. One's our monthly financial report for the month ending in February. And as well as the CIP financial report for the month ending in March. Um, thanks, Miss Emo pointed out some. Um, figures that didn't transpose over when we had saved these documents, so we uh reconfigured them and uploaded them this afternoon. Um, so um, if you had questions about that, um, those have been updated and posted. And then we also included uh just, which is an approval item, but um the school board policies are there, uh, the first batch to begin looking at. Uh, um, so we just asked that you uh review those and we'll be looking for approval um at the May meeting. And if you have any questions. Uh, please feel free to direct those to Dr. Parker or myself, um, and we'll be happy to answer any questions about these policies that are uh for review.
All right, so all of these items are simply receiving information. So is there discussion about any of the individual items this evening? All right, I don't believe I hear anyone. I don't see any hands raised. Uh, Dr. Jones.
Thanks. I'll move on to the next item for the superintendent's report, and this is a resolution for suspension of school board policies. As a result of the COVID nineteen, um, you were notified of this policy by uh BSBA. Um, so we're asking for this. This is just in case there are any things, any current policies that we would be in violation of as a result of what we're doing with COVID nineteen. Um, and it declares that this is part of a natural disaster or national emergency. Um, and given all of the um actions at both the state and the um federal level. That we are, um, this resolution will cover the school board for for um any other policies that um. Are legal or regulatory requirements that have to be waived as a result of this uh emergency.
All right, is there discussion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
All right, Mrs. Ayers has made a motion. Is there a second?
Mrs. Emo, I'll second.
Mrs. Emo has seconded Mrs. Ayers' motion. All in favor of approving the motion, oh, sorry, the resolution as presented. And we'll do a voice vote, please. Mrs. Emo?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
I.
Mr. Cole?
Uh.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walters votes aye. Motion, resolution carries five zero.
Thank you. Next item is um consider approval.
For the members, I I apologize if I'm not calling you in order every time. Uh, it's the order in which you appear on the photos at the top of my screen. So. Just keep keeping you on your toes. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. The next item is um municipal lease purchase of school buses. Uh, these are school buses that were approved in the CIP for this current fiscal year. Um, so we're asking for approval of to purchase these buses for money that was funded this year. They're not, it's not next year's dollars, it's this year's dollars. Um, but uh, we would like to move forward with this, and it is budgeted money that we would like to um. Purchase these eight regular school buses and. Excuse me, and I lost it now.
One special.
Eight regular and one special head bus.
All right, Dr. Jones, but before I open it up for questions, I have one I'd like to ask you.
Sure.
Did we communicated with the county staff and have they given us any feedback to this item? I I do recognize it's money that was allocated for this budget year, but I know that there's a lot of uncertainty.
Yep. Ms. Mr. Johns, would you like to answer that?
Uh, yes, sir, I would. Um, yes, we have communicated with uh the county uh finance director and. I actually uh coordinated all the numbers, gave her a copy of the purchase order before we signed it and sent it to the vendor. So they are fully aware of what's going on. Um, since we issued that purchase order. Uh, we also got an update from the uh vendor uh yesterday. And um, they originally were going to be able to deliver these buses in May. And because they've uh slowed down their production, we will not receive them until October. Uh, however, we still need to go through with this agenda item so that we can do the financing documents for the lease purchase piece of it. Um, and so uh, that's the status of it.
All right, so what what I, what I, I just want to ask to make sure that I heard what I think I heard you say. You've communicated with the county staff. At this point, the county staff has expressed no reservations with us moving forward with this lease purchase. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
So that's.
Mrs. Mrs. Emo.
So that's the county staff. What about the uh Board of Supervisors?
The Board of Supervisors appropriated these dollars in their budget. And they appropriated both a, the cash down payment as well as the lease purchases, a lease purchase amount. And so um, that's that's, it's an approved item in the capital improvements plan. Uh, and the dollars have been appropriated by the supervisors.
And I and I understand that, Mr. Johns, but uh as Mr. Walters said, uh, you know, I'm concerned too because. Everybody's not sure about how much money we will have um after we get out of this. So that's why I want to just be sure that. I mean, I know we need new buses, but I want to be sure that we've got the money there.
And and I'll just add, this is, these are capital dollars, not general fund dollars. Um, so it's capital money that we've. Has been appropriated, as Mr. John said. I can't, I can't speak, I don't think Mr. Johns can about. Um, if the county staff has specifically talked to Board of Supervisors about this. Um, we go on what the staff tells us and what that office tells us in terms of what we have approval to move forward with. It's, it has been appropriated. Um, so that's what we um, we would move forward with.
These are lease dollars?
Yes, these are lease dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Mr. Johns or Doc, uh, Dr. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
Yeah. So, Mr. Johns, is there any possibility, since they are delaying the delivery? And uh, is any possibility they'll give us a price break at all?
Um, no, sir, not at this time. The prices on this um were bid on the state contract. And so that's what the prices are quoted. Um, so I I do not anticipate that.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Smith.
Where where are we on those electric buses?
We are, we are still waiting on the attorneys to uh finalize the contract uh. Uh, between uh the participating school divisions and uh Dominion Power. And so once that is completed and the attorneys are all satisfied with the language in there, then we will bring that. Uh, a contract to the board for your review and consideration. then we will bring that contract to the board for your review and consideration before we move forward and issue a purchase order for those buses. We've not issued a purchase order yet.
So that, this money and these eight buses have nothing to do with the electric buses?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the municipal lease purchase of school buses. This is Mr. Cole.
All right, Mr. Cole has made a motion. Is there a second?
Mrs. Ayers will second.
Mrs. Ayers seconds Mrs. Mr. Cole's motion. All right, so now we'll do a voice vote. Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mr. Cole? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, is that Dr. Is that Mr. Johns?
Mr. Johns.
Yes, it's Mr. Johns. There are two parts to this recommendation, and that is that the board authorized me to complete the finance documents. That's a requirement for the lender. And we've done this before many times.
So you're telling us you'd like a second motion to authorize you to carry out that action? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So moved. Mrs. Ayers?
Mrs. Ayers has a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cole has seconded Mrs. Ayers' motion. All in favor of the motion will take a voice vote. Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Cole? Mr. Walters votes aye. Next item.
Thank you. Next item is to declaration of surplus. We're asking the school board to declare the vehicles listed below as surplus. These are the buses that because of mileage and or age, we are, will be taking out of our fleet and declaring them as surplus.
All right, are these, will these be replaced by the buses that we just voted on? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right, is there discussion regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman, what happens to these buses once they're taken out?
Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir. We're trading them in and the bus vendor is giving us a $2,000 credit for each bus. So that'd be $16,000 credit to, that will reduce the price of the buses.
Miss Smith, I will just, just so you know that that's far more than we would have gotten by auctioning them off. We tried to auction them off in the past and we never get anywhere close to $2,000 for a bus.
No. Oh, that sounds really good. That, that wasn't my question, but the amount that we just approved doesn't reflect that $16,000, or does it?
It does.
Oh, it does? Okay. All right, so that's already in the package.
Yes, well.
All right, good deal.
All right, thank you. Further discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the declaration of surplus buses.
All right, Mr. Cole's made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Emel seconds Mr. Cole's motion. All in favor will take a, I'm sorry?
That Mrs. Smith?
Mrs. Mrs. Mr. Cole made the motion. I heard Mrs. Emel seconded, I think along with several others. But for the minutes, Mrs. Emel has seconded the motion. So we'll take a voice vote. Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Cole? Mr. Walters votes aye. Next item, please.
Thank you. Next item is recommend approval of the special education. This is our annual plan and flow-through application. Dr. Prince, anything you wanted to add about this annual plan?
No, I don't have anything to add. We were, just to mention that funding for this, we wanted to increase, but however, it's going to fall on local revenue at this point. But we haven't made any additions to this report.
Okay.
All right, motion or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve this plan. Mrs. Ayers?
Mrs. Ayers had made a motion. Is there a second to Mrs. Ayers' motion?
Smith here seconds.
Mrs. Smith seconds Mrs. Ayers' motion. All in favor? Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Cole? Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mr. Walters votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item is the personnel docket and addendum.
Yes, the personnel docket and addendum was communicated to the board previously. We're not doing closed session. I did have a couple of conversations with board members about the docket and addendum. And we are seeking approval at this time.
You had conversations with individual board members, not as a group?
Right.
So individual board members asked questions. We have, did not have a closed session meeting to discuss this. This is the first time the item has appeared on our agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so hearing that, is there a motion regarding the personnel docket and addendum?
I'll make a motion to pass the personnel docket and addendum. Emel?
All right, Mrs. Emel's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second. Smith?
All right, Mrs. Smith has seconded Mrs. Emel's motion. We did a voice, voice vote. Mrs. Emel?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Walters votes aye. All right, thank you for that. Next item on our agenda is board comments. So we have a public comment period following our board comments. So we'll start the board comments and we'll begin with Mrs. Emel.
Okay. Yes, I would like to know if we have an update on the SSC, the summer cleaning. Dr. Jones?
Dr. Tibbs, do you have an update you'd like to share with the board?
Yes, sir. SSC has started summer cleaning in all of the buildings. They started last Monday with Powhatan Elementary and then also at Powhatan High School. What they are working on at this point is main hallways as they are not able to get into classrooms because classrooms are not packed up by teachers and they have been sanitized and disinfected. And we do not want to open them up at this time. So they are stripping hallways, they are doing floor bases, they are doing a lot of the thresholds that have been identified by board members during walkthroughs and principals and additional staff during walkthroughs, deep cleaning bathrooms. So they're really doing a lot of the common spaces and beginning to do some strip out of the hallway floors and doing that deep cleaning and that really good fine detail work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbs. I appreciate that. And please stay on them.
Not a problem.
The second update I would like to know is about the art classrooms at the middle school and the one at the high school, if we had gotten any response yet from the architects.
I have not reached, I've reached out to them. I have not gotten a response. I will reach back out again.
All right, thank you. I would just like to, my last comment to say thank you to the staff for reaching out to the parents of students that are having difficulties with the technology in District Five and all over the county for that matter. And I just encourage parents to continue to contact the teachers and the principals if they do need the hotspot or whatever the issue is that they need for this distance learning. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Emel. Mrs. Smith, you're next. And I would just say that if there are any participants virtually in our meeting, members of the public and others that would like to ask questions. I mentioned a moment ago, the public comment period is immediately after the board comments and superintendent's comments. Now would be a good opportunity for you to send your questions in or your comments in. Be glad to share those and as we move through this. So Mrs. Smith?
Okay, one remark or question I didn't get a chance to address. So on my computer at the bottom, a little orange box came up that said chat one. Did you see that, Dr. Jones?
I did, I did. It was actually somebody from our technology staff that was sharing some information about the presentation.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you. I didn't know exactly what that was all about. What exactly is your plan for teachers to be able to get in and pack up their classrooms, especially those who are retiring?
Yeah, that's a great question. Really, we wanted to get phase two rolled out and get that working. And we're going to keep an eye on kind of how the, this pandemic is, is working and see how that goes. But we will certainly provide an opportunity for teachers to get back into their classrooms. I can't say when that will be right now. We certainly want to make sure everybody stays safe and we do it in a kind of staggered fashion. But we do need to allow teachers to get back in. And once SSC finishes with all the common areas, we'd like them to move into classrooms and start working on classrooms because if we're able to reopen this summer, I anticipate we'll have a pretty vigorous summer school program. So we want to make sure we get as much cleaning done as we can now. So we'll be looking at that and discussing that as a staff and sharing that information with the teachers as well as with the board.
Okay. And then my, my last comment is just a thank you for everyone's work to making this period of learning easier. And it is something that we're learning as we go down the road. And I just appreciate everybody's efforts in it and keeping everybody in the loop and answering questions and being supportive. That's just the Powhatan way. So I'm just proud of it and for everyone that works in the system. So thank you again.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Ayers?
Yes, I just have a question. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm not sure, and maybe I overlooked something or I'm not misunderstanding the question that Miss Emel asked Dr. Tibbs about the art classrooms. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know what that is about.
So.
It was in one of the emails that he had sent. Oh, go ahead, Dr. Jones, did you?
Yeah, I think I shared in a weekly update that there was a question about the drop ceilings in the art classrooms in the middle school as well as the high school and kind of the cleanliness of those and whether that was a structural issue that we want the architects to go and take a look at and make sure that it's not contributing to dust or anything getting into those classrooms. So that's what we're getting feedback from the architects on in those four classrooms.
Okay, thank you. I do remember that and I just wasn't putting two and two together. Other than that, again, just to thank everyone for everything you're doing. Just asking everyone still to stay home and practice distancing as much as you can and just praying that we get through this quickly and with as little devastation as possible. So everybody stay safe.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ayers. Mr. Cole?
Nothing really, just a comment that I did get the opportunity to look at the two videos. One was from Flat Rock and one was from Powhatan Elementary School that the teachers have put together. They are terrific. I really do appreciate who put those two together. They did a great job. And the last thing is, I'm assuming that, Dr. Jones, as we come up with a plan for teachers to get their personal belongings, that we'll figure out what to do with the kids, students' belongings too?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Work on that as well.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. So I'll, I'll start off just with a couple of requests first. At a future meeting, or I'm amenable to receive it by one of your updates, but I'd like to know more about what we're doing with the CTE courses in terms of keeping, keeping those courses moving forward. I know many, perhaps they do, but I would suspect that maybe they may be more challenging to present in an online way because oftentimes they rely on hands-on experience. And I'd like to better understand how you are continuing to provide those educational experiences. So that's a first request. Again, I'm, I'm open to receive that and what works easiest for staff. The second request that I, or the second comment that I have is, you know, I know that during the summer, your staff, we work with vendors and others to try to do maintenance and other items on the schools. With them being unoccupied now, this might be a good opportunity to do some of those things. Perhaps your staff has already, has already begun that, but I would encourage you to do that before we do a lot of heavy cleaning and we're cleaning up all the areas if there's any and other things that are going to have to be done. Let's think about planning those two together. The, the next item is just the discussion about the ceiling. It did occur to me, you know, that, that perhaps the architect's going to look at somebody from OSHA, occupational safety aspects associated with that. But that may be part of the discussion too, is whether that's creating any challenges. Then the last thing I would just say is I echo what everyone else has said. I am very, very impressed with the work of the staff and continuing to provide what seems to be a quality educational experience for our students. I appreciate the staff's flexibility. Like everyone right now, we're trying to do the best we can under very challenging circumstances. And I hope that they take care of themselves and continue to work hard for their students. And, and we do great things in this county. I would follow what several of the folks have said. I did say, did have an occasion to speak with Chairman Williams, David Williams from the board of supervisors. Last week, we had a telephone conversa, excuse me, conversation. And he related to me his, his thanks and commendation for the work of the staff, particularly for you, Dr. Jones, on your efforts over the past several weeks to continue to deliver educational services and to coordinate with the county government in, in the work that we do together. And I told him at the time that I would mention it tonight during this meeting and I've shared that with you personally prior to this meeting, but I appreciate his efforts to continue to engage with us and to make us part of the discussion. And since he shared those kind words and I told him I would, I'm sharing them with you publicly tonight.
Thank you.
So thank you for your efforts. So that's the end of my comments. I will move now to your comments, Dr. Jones.
Sure, just, and I'll again echo comments that I've told the staff this several times over the last three or four weeks, however long it's been. It seems like a lot longer than that, how proud I am of them and the work that they've done. Special thank you to Dr. Mahundro and Dr. Prince for leading our instructional team. I can't even imagine how many Zoom meetings and calls they've been in on. But I know that they have personally sat with many meetings with teachers, grade levels, content areas to make sure that their voices are heard and that we're taking into account what they, you know, what they want best out of their students and their content in classrooms. So I appreciate their efforts, but really this is for everybody, all of our teachers, our administrators, our counselors, our instructional assistants, which continue to tell us that they want to stay connected with students and want to work with their students and to please involve them in this process. It's just been great to hear. So I'm pleased with the plan that we have. I do recognize that it's going to be new for everybody and with everything that's new, there's going to be adjustments. And we want to make sure that everybody's successful. So please, parents, students, let us hear from you and let us know how it's going. And we'll do a formal poll in a week and a half or so. But don't wait to let us know how it's going because we really do want to hear from you. The last thing that I have is just a reminder to the board, the Acton County Administrator invited me to dial in to the board of supervisors meeting on Thursday evening at 6:30 in case, in case the board of supervisors have questions about the school budget and as they be, continue to wrestle with next year's budget. So I have, I'll make myself available and participate in that call. I think their meeting begins at 6:30, so I'll dial into that and answer any questions. I have forwarded the presentation that we did tonight to the Acton County Administrator for him to forward to the board of supervisors so they're kind of aware of what we're thinking and steps we've taken for this year and for next year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. So that takes us to the second public comment period of our meeting. Again, I will read the normal statement. I recognize that it may not be completely relevant to this online experience, but just to be consistent with our policies and our practice. In accordance with school board policies, B D D H and K D, any resident of Powhatan County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have one minute. Delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes we designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members, the audience or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment. And speakers are reminded, the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. So at this point, Mrs. Hockaday, have you received any comments or questions?
No, sir, no additional emails.
I haven't seen anything on the chat at this time. Maury, do you have anything that I'm not seeing?
No, there's nothing there.
All right, we're going to wait as, as you and I discussed, Dr. Jones, we're going to addition 30 seconds. And that's just in an effort to give an individual, perhaps if they're trying to type a question or formulate one, we certainly want to give everyone an opportunity to participate and to have that chance to voice their comment to the board. All right, so I have about 30 seconds, Mrs. Hockaday. Anything else?
No, sir, nothing at this time.
And Dr. Jones, I don't see any chat comments?
No, nothing.
All right, so at this point, the last item on our agenda is adjournment. Before we adjourn, I'd just take a moment to say that I appreciate the staff putting this together. I understand this is our first effort at this. I'm sure we will work together to refine this process as we move forward. But I think the members did a nice job and the chairs struggled through this, particularly trying to listen to your voice and identify who the speaker was. But again, thank you, staff. Dr. Jones, thank you. And thank you to the members. When we do adjourn, I think what we need to do is make sure that at least three of us log out of the call so that we've ended the meeting formally. And then at that point, I hope that everyone has a wonderful evening. So the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, could I make one other comment for Mrs. Hockaday? We're keeping you in our thoughts and prayers with your dad.
Thank you.
Just know that, please. Thank you. Sorry. I know that was out of line, but.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Ayers?
Mrs. Ayers has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to Mrs. Ayers' motion?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Smith seconds Mrs. Ayers' motion. We'll do a voice vote. Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Ayers?